Good evening. It is seven o'clock, I'm calling to order the 225th Brookfield Town Meeting. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Let us lead this to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Let us please have a moment of silence for our friends and neighbors who died in the last year and for our servicemen who are overseas. Thank you. Introduce the selectmen. Brian Robishaw. Chairman. Rich Zachar. And Rich Saret. Do we have any new residents in attendance? If so, if you'd like to stand and state your name and address so we all know who you are. If not. If there's anyone present who's not a registered voter, I will remind you that it's a misdemeanor if you vote. We have a rather long announcement from the Heritage Commission. Keeping myself in order here. They asked me to read the minutes of the first town meeting. State of New Hampshire, Stratford, whereas the General Court of said state set of the upper end of Middleton by the name of Brookfield this, and William Chamberlain Esquire being appointed by said court to call the first meeting in said Brookfield and act as moderator. This is therefore to notify the inhabitants of Brookfield to meet at the house of Richard Hanson on Thursday the 10th of March, next at 10:00 of the clock, and the forenoon to act as follows. First, to choose all necessary customary town officers. Second, to choose one suitable person for governor of the said state, and one councillor and two senators. Likewise, to choose one county treasurer or reporter of deeds to note what sum can lay out on the roads the present year and what sum to raise for schooling the present year, or act in any other matter the town thinks proper when convenient. Brookfield, February 20th, 1795, William Chamberlain. At a legal meeting called and held at Brookfield being the first annual meeting town on the 10th day of March, 1795, William Chamberlain, moderator of said meeting by orders to court, John Chamberlain, town clerk, Colonel James Chamberlain, first selectman, Moses Whitehouse, second, and Lieutenant Charles Stanton, the third. The voting results, John Gilman, Governor, 45 votes. Ebenezer Smith, of Durham, councillor, 30 votes. Colonel Ebenezer Smith, of Merritton, Senator, 26 votes. General Joseph Badger of Gilmington, Senator, 10 votes. Thomas Flutman of Dover County Treasurer, 42 votes. Captain Thomas Shannon of Dover County Treasurer, 2 votes. John Plummer Jr. of Rochester, reporter of deeds, 45 votes. Captain Thomas Shannon of Dover, reporter of deeds, 3 votes. Dearing Stoddard and William Chamberlain, auditors. John Stanton and Timothy Johnson, assessors. Reuben Daniels, Stephen Leiford, Richard Wentworth, Captain Thomas Chamberlain, Dearing Stoddard, Walter Robinson, and Neil Cates, the mayors of highways. Moses Perkins, surveyor of lumber and sealer of weights and measures. Stephen Leiford, fence viewer. Samuel Wiggins, field driver. James Palmer, hog reed. The town voted to clear John Palmer from working on the main road and do his work on his own road the present year. Major Ezekiel Sanborn, surveyor of lumber. The town voted to lay off a road from William Wiley's two inches away in Turkey's land. The town voted that the town meeting should be held at Edmund Horns at Brookfield the present year. The town voted to lay out one day's work on the single pole upon the roads, and voted to raise 15 pounds for schooling the present year. And then the town officers were sworn, all but Moses Perkins and Samuel Wiggins, and then proceeded to set the collectorships up to vend due to the lowest bidder, and John W. Colder bid it off. And was to give $10 for the privilege of collecting the money, and made choice of John W. Colder of constable, and by reason of said coroner not getting bondsman, the town voted to reconsider the vote of John W. Colder of constable, and chose another in his room. The town voted that should be left to the selectmen to get a collector, and Benjamin Clay was voted collector by said selectmen, and Ezekiel Sanborn and Richard Wentworth, bondsman for said Clay vote. Benjamin Clay, constable, the present year, installed the said meeting. John Chamberlain, clerk. They've asked me to read the positions that were appointed as town officers and which are equivalent positions now. The moderator was the official presided over the annual town meeting. For those of you who don't know me, I'm William Marsh. Wow, thank you.
You're very welcome.
It's impressive. Selectmen were the most prominent and responsible men in the town. Duties included managing the town's financial affairs, assessing taxes, maintaining the town property, appointing other officials, and caring for the poppers. Our current selectmen are Brian Robishaw, Richard Saret, and Richard Zachar. The surveyor of lumber was responsible for certifying sizes and quantities and grading of lumber sold. And they are giving this award to Cecil Wentworth, who is currently our town cane owner as our oldest resident at 101. The sealer of weights, inspecting scales and containers used in trade and certified their accuracy. This award is given to Kagan Weeks because his grandfather held this position in 1994. Fence viewers are charged with inspecting fences that were to keep out domestic animals and act as referee to any squabble that erupted over neighborly fencing. Brad Williamson, this is your duty. Field drivers are responsible for corralling stray animals and removing slugs to the town pound. Edward Nathan and Dick Wilson. The hog reeds.
This is my favorite.
They're responsible for capturing errant swine and encouraging them to be yoked and rained. They could collect fees from the owners of marauding pigs that wrecked havoc on local gardens. The youngest married men were usually chosen for this job since they had the most energy to chase dead. John Demambray. The pound keeper was responsible for the feeding and care of stray livestock such as hogs, cattle, horses, sheep, and geese. Bob Surbichak. Constable served as the police officer responsible for posting town warrants, serving writs, and escorting unwanted poppers out of town. Richard Mouser.
Mr. Moderator, may I make a comment?
You may.
As a new town constable. I just had sinus surgery a few days ago, so when I sound funny it's because I can't breathe. And I think maybe the surgeon removed a few brains. I've decided that I am going to decree in 1794, I believe it is. Is that right, Mary Lou?
Yes.
That I now decree that all of the burgeoning and obviously successful bordellos and tap houses in Brookfield are hereby must close by 10 o'clock every night. All of the upstanding fathers and husbands will be home by at least 10:05. And then we're gonna roll up the sidewalk in front of the townhouse. Everybody's gotta go home.
And Richard, are you gonna inspect them to make sure this happens?
I am. Firstly, I want to respect all of the bordellos and tap houses. I would also like to request $57.20. I've done my research for some new steel bars, actually iron bars, from the Pittsburgh Iron Works to replace the pine saplings we have in the bars in our jail right now.
We guess supplies you'll have an opportunity to make.
And I would also like $11.52 for a uniform and a hat.
I wouldn't push my luck. Surveyor of fireworks, they used to be four. At the first town meeting, seven surveyors were chosen, each responsible for a section of road within his part of the town. This basically meant supervising road repairs in summer and breaking out roads in winter. Each landowner was responsible for maintaining his own stretch of road. We have Jay Badger to be in charge of Stonemore. We have Ron Pryor and Frank Frazier. We have two tidyingmen responsible for enforcing laws pertaining to work and travel on the Sabbath, and to be ever vigilant concerning the morality of the townspeople. For that, we have Ernie Brown. And the tidying woman, Harriet Wilson. And the last town office that we have is the bell ringer. The bell ringer is responsible to ring the town bell for all important town occasions. We are nominating Aaron Dane because he has volunteered to replace the worn rope on the town bell. I think we actually have a smaller government than they had in 1794. That's unique for this town. And it's interesting how things have remained the same here for so long. Something we can be commended on. Mary Lou, did you want to add anything?
So I just would briefly add that this is our 225th anniversary of the founding of town. And one of our big events will be June 29th. It will be here, in the townhouse, and it is a recreation of the event that was held in 1908 that was the dedication of both the bell and the bell tower. We're trying to get a band, a community band, to come and play, and I think we may have them. The high school was not available. Band, but we're also, I hope you'll come, because it should be a wonderful evening. I have, I found a copy of the original program in my aunt and uncle's information that they left at the house, and so we're gonna try and stick to that as closely as we can. Carolyn Chase will come and do us the honor of reading the poem that was written for that event called "The New Bell", June 29th.
Are there any other announcements? Seeing none. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the rules, as they've been posted on the website for considerable amount of time and have not changed, unless you want to hear me read them again, in which case I'll go.
I hope you read them. I hope you read them.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. I'm very happy, because it's a very small group, so I don't mean to read them. I'm now going to announce the results of the recent election. For selectmen. Brian Robishaw, 84 votes. Jesse Dotier, 13 votes. Raymond Dotier, 13 votes. Martin Stengel, 12 votes. I declare Brian Robishaw the winner. For town clerk, Virginia McKinley, 122 votes. One scatter vote, I declare Virginia the winner. For tax collector, Diana Peckham, 127 votes. One scatter vote, I declare Diana the winner. For treasurer, Mary Lou McLean, 131 votes. One scatter vote, I declare Mary Lou McLean the winner. For trustee of the trust funds, Thomas Lavender, 127 votes. One scatter vote, I declare Thomas Lavender the winner. For cemetery trustee, Pam Skeffington, 130 votes. One scatter vote, I declare Pam Skeffington the winner. For supervisor of the checklist, Susan Raven, 129 votes. I declare Susan the winner. For auditor, Lori Champy, 129 votes. I declare Lori Champy the winner. For planning board, Ed Camo, 96 votes. Diane Smith, 60 votes. Terry Ward, 79 votes. One scatter vote, I declare Ed Camo and Terry Ward the winners. Warn article number two. Giving the selectmen the authority to divide the town meeting. 106 yes, 30 no, I declare that the warrant article passes. The town will now turn its attention to warrant article number three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be deposited into the Moose Mountain Capital Reserve Fund. The selectmen recommend this. Rich Saret, you wish to make that as a motion?
I move that we make that a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. You want to speak to your motion then?
This $30,000 going into the Moose Mountain Capital Reserve Fund is going into the reserve fund for the Moose Mountain Bridge project. Price seems to be escalating on this, and we don't have enough in there right now, so that's why we're having this money here. We're also meeting with Holden Engineering, the people who were giving us the estimate, the plans for the bridge, this Thursday morning. In addition to that, we're gonna look into alternative methods of, and talk to some other people about, maybe a more cost-effective way of fixing this bridge, rather than replacing the abutments and deck. One of the things that raised the price on the project is, their proposal included putting a sediment capture tank in the middle of the road, which would close the road, and it would be a need to erect a temporary bridge alongside the bridge that's being worked. And it's, it's just getting too expensive the way these people are proposing to do this job. So that's one of the reasons why we want to look into an alternative method. So if you want to, Thursday, we'll get more information from Holden, and we'll be able to have that available at the next selectman's meeting.
Further discussion. Seeing none, is the town ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The article passes. Number four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $80,000 to be deposited into the Road and Bridge Repair Capital Reserve Fund. Rich, I understand you want to make that as a motion?
I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rich, would you like to speak to your motion?
I will. This $80,000 goes into our trust fund that we use to do road maintenance, summer road maintenance. We've got a plan laid out that Brian's gonna talk to you shortly about for this year, but next year we're looking at two issues. We're looking at Clark Road starting to break down on us, and Moose Mountain still hasn't been addressed. So we see those two large issues coming at us next year, and the $80,000 would be in the trust fund to fund that work. If we decide to go that way next year, and there could be some new road issues that come up that we have to deal with, the current thinking is, we've got to deal with these two roads.
Further discussion on the warrant article. Seeing none, is the town ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The warrant article passes. Number five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $170,000 for the major repair of town roads, and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of said sum from the Road and Bridge Repair Capital Reserve Funds. Brian, I understand you wish to make that as a motion?
I do.
I do, is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Brian, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, briefly please. Last year, no paving work was done. By the time we had a paving contract executed, but cold weather got here before the paving could be performed. So while the number 170 seems rather large, it's accounting for a year of no paving, and the prior year was a relatively light year of work. This year, we are looking to get Pike Brook Road done. It's been prepped somewhat, and we will get that ready and get Pike Brook done. We look to get Bryce Drive paved. There are hills on tumble-down dick road that need to be repaved, and we're looking to do approximately six aprons onto dirt roads. So as you are entering the roadway, you're not speeding the tires on gravel. You're getting up the road safely. And those are the projects we're looking to do this year, and that would be roughly $170,000.
Further discussion on the warrant article. Go ahead.
Gary Chigroni, 85, Leiford Road. I have a question about, who did the assessment on what the value of these repairs are to be? Did you go out and get prices on all these repairs? I'm just curious.
We use our road agent who would go ahead and we would consider whether or not we grind the road and or gravel road, and then we have cost contracts from paving contractors.
Who gave the, has anybody given a price on it, or just a hypothetical guess to it?
On what, the paving?
Yeah.
We have our contracts from last year that gave us numbers, which were pretty well in line, and we like to think they're gonna hold to those numbers.
Were there any competitive bids given, or off-wire?
No, there were no competitive bids taken.
So we just go one with one horse in the stream, and whatever they say is what we're gonna do?
Well, we trust the road agent has a good idea of what paving contracts is in the area, give them good competitive bids. Well, we did have two contracts, but I don't think we have one for the aprons and the hills. But for the Pike Brook and the Bryce, I believe we had contracts. They were pretty well in line, they were 50, 100 bucks off, if I remember correctly.
Is the town interested in additional quotes by reputable people? Or are you gonna, are we stuck with whoever it is that we're stuck with, or?
So we can use whoever out there with competitive bids, and if they're reputable, that'd be interesting.
I'd like the ability to get a list of that, where it's gonna be done and get comparable quotes, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I'll donate my time, I'm not looking for remuneration or anything.
I just write off the roads that we're doing, I can get you a more complete list.
Yeah, I'd like that.
And I can get you the road project list. Remember, we did that road project list a while ago.
Yep.
I can email you that.
I believe our road agent has his hand up?
No, he, I was gonna give him the rough figure of difference between the two.
Frank Frazier?
Yes, Frank Frazier, Laugre Road. First off, I'd just like to say, the time to really discuss this is at the budget hearing. So there was only three of us in this audience at the budget hearing this year, it's pretty typical. I really encourage taxpayers and citizens of the town, come to the budget hearings and hear these kind of discussions in far more detail. The bottom line of our operating budget this year, if you've looked in your books, is it's just under a million bucks for that. But our total appropriations, if we approve all of these warrant articles we're voting on right now, is gonna be 1.3 million, which is about 200 million, 200,000, excuse me, more than last year. If there was a spot in the budget to cut some money tonight, this would probably be the one to do it on with the least impact on the town. $170,000, there's a lot of road projects, we really haven't done that kind of big job in town for a while. We're eventually going to have to spend it, because the roads do need maintenance. The question is whether we want to try and catch up and have a big spend of money this year, and catch up and get these projects done, or maybe push them out a little bit over a wire timeframe. That'd be a decision tonight. I'm not gonna make an amendment to that effect, but that's a decision we can make here tonight. Thank you.
If you can, but I'm gonna notice a few other hands that have been up.
Marilyn Bushman. Brian, can you tell us which roads you're planning to do the aprons on?
Brian, the other one, you answer that one.
Okay, and do you remember all the aprons?
So it's Tucker Road, Leiford Road, Robinson Road. Walker. Sanborn.
He's a Rayburns.
Further discussion.
Do you plan for the work that wasn't done last year? Are you doing double the work this year?
Would you kindly state your names for the meeting as well?
Sandra Pryor, 203 Leiford.
That's what I'd like to respond to what Frank is raising. When you see the $170,000, we have money in a capital reserve fund. We've raised these funds already, this is not being appropriated by the taxation. It's money that we have, we're gonna yank the money out of the capital reserve fund to fund this project. That's, that's the whole idea behind, when you see this large number, this number's not gonna be raised via taxation, because this is money that the town, over the years, has asked us to set aside in these capital reserve funds in order to prepare for lots of projects like this.
So you're saying it's not gonna be taxation for this additional money that you have to find, removing it?
Correct.
Further discussion. Seeing none, is the town ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The warrant article passes. Number six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500 to be deposited into the conservation fund. Rich, I understand you wish to make that as a motion?
I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
You wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, I do. The Conservation Committee has been very, very active this year and last year. They've accomplished a great deal. They have some interesting plans for this coming year. And instead of me going through all of them, Frank Frazier has volunteered to give us some highlight of what they've accomplished and what they're planning to do.
So the biggest thing we've accomplished, by the way, we need more members on the Conservation Division, so please join us, we would love to have you. The biggest thing we accomplished is, under the direction of the selectmen, we hired a forester, and he produced a forest, a long-term forest management plan for the property we're calling the town reserves. This is the property the town bought on Leiford Road. Basically, it's the old governor's road that includes a historic site. And we now have a forest management plan done. That's gonna allow us to do multiple things. One, manage the land, but also, we can now apply for some state grants to get some money to do some of the wildlife projects and things in there. We couldn't do that without the plan, we now have the plan. But also, part of, for those of you who own acreage and have a forester and have a forestry plant, is that also you need to log it occasionally. Where actually, there's, the whole property was divided up into five, five forest areas, and one of them really needs to be logged soon, possibly this year. And the town will derive revenue from that. That revenue, by the way, is gonna go straight into the general fund, not into the conservation fund, it goes into the general fund, so we're just managing it. So we're going to engage with the forester, and we're gonna see if it's either this year or next year or when he thinks that cut should be done. We're also gonna do some maintenance and mowing in some areas where invasive row are growing to help improve habitat. And instead of, as a lot of you know- And instead of, as a lot of you know, we do town on around the weekend of Earth Day, which is April 20th this year. We usually have a town cleanup day where people walk the roads and clean up. We're going to ask you, most everybody that walks the roads does that all year long anyway. So this year, we're going to have a work party day on Saturday, April 20th, and we don't have a rain date yet, but we aren't targeting for Saturday, April 20th. To clean up around the foundation of the historic insight that is on the old governor's road, it's in the middle of this property, we'll give you guys a chance to walk and see the preserve and see the hay field, which is really a pretty neat asset the town owns now, being actively hated and managed by someone. And we're going to try and clear the invasive plants around the stone foundation before that was the James Hackett, who's one of our famous residents in town. His inn and home site before the bushes devour it and you can't see it anymore. So we're going to be in there. We're going to do some other projects. We put some birdhouses in there already. Where's Jim? She's here somewhere. And we're going to put more birdhouses in there this year, and that's large where a lot of our efforts are going to go. The conservation commission is also working in concert with the planning board. As many of you might know, planning board is in the middle of upgrading the master plan for the town of Brookfield, and the conservation commission is going to help with the natural resources section that's part of the master plan. Thank you. Please join us. We can do some additional testing.
Further discussion on the Warren article?
Well, just one additional one, and that's the forestry plan is on the website. It's excellent, really. It's under the conservation homepage.
Yes. Any further discussion? Diane?
Diane Smith, Woodborough. I might be mistaken, but did not the conservation fund contribute to the forest management plan cost?
Yes, it did. It contributed $1,000. And the... There was a grant from the state for 1,500. And if you look in your town report on page 54, you'll see that information with the $1,000 coming out to pay for a portion of the forest management plan. There's currently a balance of $4,924.20 as of December 31st.
Further discussion on the Warren article?
Did the forester give an estimate of standing timber value?
He did, and it's in the report. And I can't... I'm not going to put it right off the top of my head right now. It was a substantial amount, actually.
I think he estimated $150,000 worth of standing timber across the 258 acres. The parcel that he recommended be harvested is some number less than that.
Would I be correct that that money being put into the general fund will offset all of our taxes next year? Further discussion?
Should some of the money go back to the conservation commission to reimburse what they put in?
This being the legislative body for the town, that's for you to decide.
I would propose that I move that the conservation commission be reimbursed for the funds that they have already contributed to this plan.
Okay. Would you please give our former representative a piece of paper and pencil so she can read her amendment down? The amount is $1,000, if I might correct my... Is there a second to the motion, which was made for $1,000 from the forestry proceeds to be reimbursed to the conservation fund in addition to the $500 that's being appropriated in this Warren article? It's been moved in second. Over here. Isn't there a motion already on the floor?
This is a motion to amend the motion on point. And that is in order. But I'm making her submit it to me in writing as it's accordance to the rules, because I will not be able to remember what our motion is, and neither will the clerk. At this point in time, we are discussing the amendments. There are further discussion about the amendment?
Over here.
Just a question with that. If I understand correctly, the timber has not been cut yet, and this is transferring hypothetical funds?
That is correct, yes. Over here.
Wait, just...
I'll get back to you in a minute. Yeah, over here.
I'm going to agree with you. While this is very generous, Martha, I think this might be a little premature. The time to potentially do this is after we do the cut and we see how much money we make. Then next year, at town meeting, might be an appropriate place to appropriate some additional funds for the conservation. And you could base it on how much money we make from the cut. So I believe while... I believe all the members of the conservation commission really is arguing your support, it might be a tad premature because we really haven't done the cut yet. We might not do it for a couple of years. So it's in the future. Once it's done and we know what it is, that could be a different subject.
Would I not be correct that the conservation commission would probably include that language in their proposal as a Warren article when the time comes?
We say that.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, are you ready for the questions? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion fails. I do appreciate your amendment, Martha, for the current progress. You're back to the original motion, which is the Warren article as presented. Over here.
John Chan was, does this commission receive any type of assistance from the Strafford Regional Planning Commission in any form?
Frank, can you answer that question?
Not to my knowledge.
Does anybody else have other information? Nobody else appears to have any other information. Any further discussion? Is the town ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion parrots. Next one, number seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500 to be deposited into the heritage fund. Brian, I understand you wish to make that as a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brian, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, just briefly. This is very describing. This is our 225th anniversary this year. The Heritage looks to go ahead and use this sort of funds in order to get these sort of activities done, also, you know, look to preserve our history, so on and so forth. We have relatively meager funds, but at times, we've been able to contribute funds to things such as getting the lights in here, getting studies done, hosting certain activities that would foster a community spirit, as well as kind of still hanging on to some of our historical past.
Further discussion? Back here.
Mary McLean, 902 Lyford. Brian, these funds can't really be used for the activities that we're doing this summer.
Will you not do this summer activities?
No. No, we have been doing fundraising dinners, as most of you know, for the last 10 years. So we'll use those funds, they're not very much, but they'll help us, to fund the activities this summer. But these would be used... Look above you. We need to replaster this ceiling, and we need to do other work here in the townhouse. So these funds would be used either to help with grant money or help with the plastering and contribute to helping with the plastering and those kinds of...
Do these funds help with cooperating the book and refund the book?
No.
These can't be upgraded?
No, I don't believe so.
So they're not intermingled?
No.
The moderator will know that there is no language in the Warren article authorizing the withdrawal of funds from the heritage fund, so therefore, we're not authorizing any expenditure of money from the heritage fund for any purpose whatsoever unless the town wishes to amend the Warren article as presented. Is there further discussion?
Isn't there somewhere in here raising money for building, repair, and maintenance? Because I think that would cover the plaster.
Yes, that's the next Warren article, the townhouse repair expendable trust fund. We'll deal with that when we get here.
I don't know if I would need this then.
Would you like to speak against the Warren article?
Yes. I object because I think we've already, we'll be covering it in item eight.
Okay, that's... Thank you. Any further discussion? Mary Lou?
So I guess what I would say, Martha, is that this would help the town for us to be able to contribute some of our funds to things that would help... The Heritage Commission Fund contributed half of the cost of the new lights that we put in a couple of years ago. And that's where this fund would come in and would be useful for the town. And I'd like to see it continue.
We're good. Any further discussion? Is the town ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
The Warren article passes. Next one, number eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be deposited to the townhouse repair expendable trust fund. Rich, I understand you wish to make that as a motion?
I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Rich, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, this is the fund that we use to maintain and repair this facility. Since we started the fund, we've put a new roof on it. We've done the electric wiring. We've put new heating systems in. We have siding to do on the outside. We have plaster to do, and we have painting to do inside. And then, as time permits, the windows should be addressed. And this money is used for that effort. So we're asking to put the $15,000 into that trust fund. That money is dedicated to the repair of this facility.
Further discussion?
So we'll get an extra $500 from the conservation commission?
Representative Pike, are you making a motion?
No.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to say?
In the fund account?
Thank you. 76. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Further discussion? Over here.
So the wording of the Warren article is townhouse repair expendable trust fund? And I look on page 59, which seems to show expendable trust fund. It looks like the townhouse repair expendable trust fund was closed down as a zero balance. It appears that the $74,967.71 was transferred into, onto page 58, which shows capital reserve funds. And the townhouse repair fund on that, capital reserve, that shows the balance of $76,500 and change. So I think my question is, is the wording of the Warren article correct?
My understanding is all the Warren articles have been submitted to DRA for their approval. And if the treasurer would like to respond further about the things in the report, I'd be glad to give you the floor.
So what I would say was, I was going by the last list that I had from the trustees of the trust fund saying where is expendable trust or capital reserve fund. So obviously, it was listed wrong, unfortunately, on the list that I had.
Mr. Matt Rigg, can we amend the wording of this to correct that?
The... The meeting group would ever wish to work the legislative body of the town.
You wish to make an amendment?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, if you just write it down, that'd be great.
I'll write it down.
Will it take you a few minutes to pull this together?
I think if I understand correctly, the amendment would need to change expendable trust fund to capital reserve fund, right?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded to do...
To change the... Where the $15,000 from the house repair expendable trust fund to the house repair capital reserve.
The house repair capital reserve.
Right, because the other one's been closed down.
That makes sense to me. Further discussion on the amendment? Go ahead.
On the amendment, I just want to make sure it's clear that the trust fund, the selectmen are still the... Can expend from the capital reserve fund, because they want to spend some of that money this year on painting and on repairs. I don't want to tie this money up and then see it not be able to be expended this year because the selectmen, I believe, have projects for this building plan for this year.
The selectmen like your song.
What can I say? That's a concern. We have to make sure that we have the money in the correct fund and that we are agents to expend that fund. I think we're sort of trapped, right? If the fund's been closed, if the trust has been closed, then we should have used the other word. I do not know off the top of my head whether there were agents to expend on the other fund or not.
Diane?
I would have the paperwork on this with me, but I will say that at the last meeting of the trustees of the trust fund, there was acknowledgement that nomenclature between... That was being used by the trustees of the trust fund was not necessarily the same as the nomenclature for trust funds that the board of selectmen were making. And I just... I appreciate Rob and Catherine's comments, but I would... I don't know how to resolve this because what I would like to say is that everyone understands which account it is. It's just a matter of whether or not it's being called the same thing by both entities. And I just... I don't have an opinion. I just want to make sure that folks understand that this inconsistency has been going on for some time. I thought that it had been pretty much squared away, but I... What's in the report isn't necessarily... Well, I don't... I won't say it's wrong. I won't say it's right. I just think there's some question about where those names are. I think that the accounting of what is in, you know, what the purpose of those accounts are, are clear, but, you know, I... So I'll just... What happened a couple of years ago was that a name changed at town meeting. It didn't get changed all the way through. I fear that if we change something right now, it's going to further confuse things. Perhaps one of the trustees of the trust fund might speak to this.
Last year, on article eight, we voted to appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be deposited into the townhouse repair capital reserve fund.
So the amended language would be consistent with last year's language. Was there any language in that as to with the agents to expend?
No.
Okay. May I suggest to you, Mr. Collins, that if we added the language and to authorize the selectmen as agents to expend this fund, if they're not already the agents to expend this fund, that would make them the agents?
That is not my amendment.
Okay, I understand that. I ask to question. Is there any further discussion on Mr. Collins' amendment? The amendment is to change expendable trust fund to capital reserve fund. Over here.
When I was a trustee of the trust fund, and that's the reason I'm speaking, the capital reserve fund is put aside for future expendables. It's a saving program.
Correct.
And the trustee, the young selectman, cannot extend from it. To extend from it, there has to be a motion to take the money from the capital reserve and put it into expendable.
So you are...
So the way it is now, the selectmen can extend that money this year. But if it's put into capital reserve...
They wouldn't be able to...
Unless we have a new motion, we have to wait another year to make the motion.
Okay. So you're suggesting that we vote against this amendment?
Yes.
Is there further discussion on the amendment? Back here. Steve Patterson, Wentworth Road. But if there's not an account currently called expendable trust fund, where's the money going? Would that just change? Would the treasurer like to answer that question?
Well, no, because these are trust funds and...
Will the trustee of the trust fund appear to answer the question?
To my knowledge, Ken Fremo.
Well, to my knowledge, Ken Fremo, on page fifty-nine, there is one, it's just a balance of zero. We do have a trust fund.
That I think is a reasonable position. Tom Lacher, I don't see him anywhere, he's the elected trustee, so we can't ask him questions. Any further discussion on the motion? On the amendment? Is the town ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The amendment fits, we're back to the original Warren Article which is to deposit the $15,000 into the Town House Repair Expendable Trust Fund. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
I believe it passes. Number nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,000 to be deposited into the Town Hall, into the Town Building Office Equipment Expendable Trust Fund. Brian, I understand you wish to make that as a motion.
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Brian, would you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. This quite simply is an account we have set up in order to fund any kind of major office equipment, be it a copier, computers. Right now our copier is antiquated but it continues to work and at times when there's been repairs, they basically cannibalize old machines to get parts for us but we're nearing the end, the end of the use of lights of it. So right now we're hoping it'll get to the year but this $2,000 would be added to that account in order to prepare for the need for a new copier either this year or hopefully another year or two down the road if we can keep the fund going.
Good. Any further discussion? Is the town ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Warren Article passes. Number ten, Brian, I'm going to read your alternative language as the motion.
Thank you.
The, Brian Rocha is moving this alternative language for Warren Article number ten which is appropriate, to see if the town will vote to establish a cable internet Capital Reserve Fund and raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be deposited into the Cable Internet Capital Reserve Fund, further to designate the selectmen as the agents to expend. The purpose of this fund is continued deployment of high-speed internet service throughout the town. You wish to, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you, do you wish to speak to your question?
Yes, please. First of all, there is an amendment to this motion even though in the town report, it's already there. We had our report into DRA well in advance of when we needed to get our town report printed. The lady that typically reviews all of our Warren Articles, our budget, she was out sick for over a week. Very tail end, she gets in touch with us even though DRA had approved and sent us their preliminary approval of all our warrants and our budget, she starts to catch things that she's not comfortable with. So we had to make an amendment to a couple of our Warren Articles, this being one wherein she added that language just to express the need for the purpose of the fund, which again is the purpose of this fund is continued deployment of high-speed internet service throughout the town. Now to go on to the purpose of this $25,000, it seems like a nebulous number, what's that $25,000 doing? Where's it going? What's its real purpose? We're hearing from a lot of folks in town, especially the ones that don't have high-speed internet, that it is a major problem and there's also, we've heard from real estate agents, people trying to sell the houses that do not have high-speed internet, that sales aren't as easy because someone's trying to move in, they want to work from home, they want to have the ability to connect high-speed, they don't have it. This year we've employed a, an attorney, a law firm that specializes in cable contracts and obviously a high-speed internet would come through Spectrum, or whatever they call that. And we had a franchise agreement that was coming up to, that was expired and they wanted us to renew. We renewed only for one year per Council's recommendation because she still wants to see what leverage we have in order to get the remaining coverage of high-speed internet in town in place. We are doing that, we're also trying to explore, is there grant money, is there another carry that may want to come in? There's options but we're somewhat at the mercy of the current cable contract that's in town here and their whole idea of covering this additional area which is a pretty substantial area, especially if you live in it, that they're saying there's not enough homes to warrant them stringing cable all the way down the road. This $25,000, we understand that there might be grant money out there, matching grant money, so we're trying to anticipate the need for expenditures down the road to get proper cable coverage across the entire town. Will this be grant money, will this be employment of another attorney, will it be some sort of study, something that we need to do? So we're trying to have funds set aside in the event we need them and we can engage in order to go ahead and get, put inspection's feet to the fire or prove our case that they should be coming down here to give us 100% coverage. So again, I think there's going to be a lot of discussion, a lot of concern about this but right now with the homes that do not have internet coverage and people that are trying to sell, people trying to build, it is a big problem, it's a very big problem.
I will clarify that the motion on the floor contains your amendments, I, further discussion over here.
Two other points, we've asked through the lawyer to have Spectrum quantify how much it would cost to expand the system. Right now we have no idea how much so we can't deal with the issue because how big is it? And they're sort of pushing back, they don't want to give us a number so that we can deal with it, they don't want to build out their, out their network. We think we need about six miles worth of coverage if we're going to cover the town and that's about 100 dwellings that don't have high-speed internet today. That's about 25% of the town doesn't have it, it's about six miles and we asked Spectrum through the lawyer to tell us how much it would cost and then maybe we can start working how to solve the problem.
Number here.
How long ago did they ask about it?
Just out of curiosity.
Septemberish.
And it's still, they haven't, they just don't want to give you an answer.
Once they give you an answer, you can solve a problem, they give you the problem. Right now it's big, we don't have anything to put our hands on. They don't want to do it.
You're approaching it like how much a foot.
However they want to quantify.
However they want to do it.
It's been a discussion for 20 years I believe.
Just as a comment, Spectrum is selling Time Warner to AT&amp;T. I think that's been improved and it'll be another year it'll be gone and I think meantime Spectrum is melting for everything they can get. So they are in a position where they probably don't want to put any more money into the system. But I do think it's worth pursuing. And the other question I have is about satellites. I mean, we have ads for HughesNet for instance coming in and I think it's a satellite high-speed internet and maybe that would solve people's problems, I don't know.
The back here.
Peter Donnelly, Wors Drive. Do they have access to Consolidated Communications because they get internet, don't they? About six miles of whatever people can't get Time Warner?
Yes, they define high-speed internet as 25 MIPS.
Right.
And the best you can get from Consolidated is six or seven. We have six here, we're close to the office. Where the federal government defines high-speed is 25 MIPS.
Back here. Steve Patterson, Wentworth Road, I am one of the unfortunate 25%. I live on Route 109, I cannot get cable internet service through the cable company provided. We currently have Consolidated, I cannot even open up and completely read a 30-second reading card on my current service without it stopping to pause, wait a few minutes for it to then set up. I spoke with Spectrum, I don't know who it was, at the time I spoke, everybody was being sold all the time. I was told personally I could bring my cable, $1,600 was going to cost me to bring it from 314 Wentworth Road to where I live at 411. I believe part of the problem is the fact that the contract that was signed says that they will provide internet service to every home that is within 200, 200 feet of each other. Unfortunately, we have 200 feet that are empty for our street frontage which eliminates the 25% of us. I strongly urge you to help your fellow citizens to be able to read a birthday card from their grandchild.
Ken Fremo, Tumble Down Dick Road. I recently just terminated my HughesNet service because it was lousy and now all I have is mobile service, which is better than the HughesNet, so I would recommend, people don't go to HughesNet, not on advertisement against them, but it didn't work well for me. I'd love to have some sort of wire coming down the road to get high-speed service.
Very good. I don't believe this Warren Article specifies the solution, it's just appropriated money and it may very well turn out that something else like 5G will work with it. And we'll see, it gives the selectmen some authority here. Any further discussion? Back here.
Yeah, this is Frank Fraser, I was on the Cable Committee for a long time. This all stems from the Telecommunications Act of 1976, this is a federal problem, we are not unique, every rural community in this country has this exactly problem right now. This needs to be solved federally. Most other industrial countries in the world are, have long been putting money in to making sure their population all had high-speed internet. The Telecommunications Act of 1976 states that the cable companies do not have to put cable unless there's at least 25 homes per mile and that just doesn't work in most of the rural areas. We fought to get Leiford Road and to get parts of Stoner Road done and it was just because they, somebody wasn't looking the right way, one day they decided to do it, they didn't have to do it. This $25,000 is simply a reserve, we may never be able to use it because Spectrum might come back and say they want $20 million to build it out, we don't know what they're going to want when they come back to the town. So, but this does give the selectmen at least some funds in the kitty in case there's a chance to do some advocacy or something that might help us bring high-speed internet to the whole town. I am not, personally not opposed to spending town money even though I have cable in front of my house now and I have high-speed internet, but I'm not opposed to spending some town funds, it's just that this $25,000 might sit in this account for a while and we never use it and it goes back in the general fund someday. So just, this is not, this $25,000 potentially is not going to cure anything but it's there in case an opportunity comes up, it gives the, gives the selectmen some funds to, to continue to help it the rest of this issue. But it's probably going to be a federal solution when it finally comes or a technology one where somebody figures a cheaper, better way to do it. That works in rural environments.
Over here.
Hi, Sandy Pryor, 203 Leiford. I'm part of the 25% also, I can't send a photograph with an email, I can't download a program. I have practically thrown things at my computer through the years. The fact that Spectrum has been vacillating since, since September, why did the town renew the contract? Wasn't there any, could there have been any leverage to go with another company that might have helped out?
The dissection might answer the question.
It was a preemptive agreement that we need to renew, it was overdue. The ability to shop our networks to somebody else was, we don't believe was there and our town attorney recommended that signing up for a one-year franchise agreement gave her time to begin to sort this out a little bit more so, so it was advice from council.
So this is when it was due 2020?
Yes.
They charter wanted us to sign a 10-year franchise agreement and we said time, we don't have any experience signing franchise agreements like this, so we got the lawyer involved, she says she needs some time, let's sign up for one year, let's see what we can negotiate. The one year's up in August of this year now, so we'll see what we can get. They don't want to spend the money, the bottom line is, it's a private company and they don't want to spend the money.
Yeah, they just threw this 10-year contract at us like, and it was so technical, we knew when we were weighing over our heads and we went on to the council.
Back here. Has this lawyer looked into I believe it's SB 70 which was passed by the state of New Hampshire a year or two ago which allowed for a town to bond this sort of thing, but just this problem that we're having in the state?
Yes, and that legislation says the town will buy and operate the cable system. We don't think we want to get into that business.
Questions, Mike Moore, Lightyear Road. So something, the $25,000 is, where did that number come from? Why $25,000?
That's why I say it's a nebulous number, we were trying to think of something that was substantial enough that we could begin to assert the spot but we didn't want to go overboard but we didn't want nickel and dime thing with $5,000 and we felt it was a number that could get us started if it was some sort of magic fund or if we had then even appropriate money via taxation to help us get us to where we would need. It was, it was more or less, we batted numbers around, there's no scientific basis behind the $25,000.
Over here. Did you mention the realtors are giving feedback that this might be affecting property values and, did you quantify that at all? Is this, is that 25% of the town basically, you know, if they add high-speed internet, they, those properties would be assessed at 5% more or something like that?
I don't give a, I don't give any kind of quantification, doesn't make sales more difficult then, we know the one sale that fell through.
The reason I ask is because if, if we as a town invest in that infrastructure, if we end up spending this money and investing in the infrastructure, it may actually lower the taxes of the 75% that already have. I mean, it may actually benefit the 75% if it is having a big enough effect on the property values of the 25%.
I believe you're correct. Over here.
Ken Fremo again, I don't think they're talking about $25,000 invested in infrastructure, this is for studies and for lawyers, for legal fees to investigate what we can do with the cable companies or the, am I correct? You're not talking about $25,000 for.
Right, what we understand, we as a town cannot legally build or invest into utilities, that's why, that's why I was trying to make it clear that this would be either for matching grant funds, studies or new lawyers, lobbyists, I don't know what the heck we would do it for, but it's something we want to have there in our back pocket in the event we can begin to make some sort of move that puts some pressure on it.
As the real estate agent who gave the information to the selectmen, there were three homes that we have attempted to sell on Wentworth Road as well as Leiford Road. People who wanted to buy them did want to work at home, the highest amount of properties we could get was $50,000 below asking price. We ended up selling the property to someone who did not care about internet service but the people that want internet service and want to come into town need high speed.
So the house did sell for $10,000?
The house ended up selling for I believe $40,000 or less. Very unhappy homeowner. Further discussion?
Well, shouldn't that be up to the property owner or shouldn't it be the burden of the person who wants it, not the entire town? I mean, it's like if you want to sell your house and you think cable is deterrent, isn't it your responsibility to therefore then provide it?
This body being the legislative body of the town, it's up for this body to decide the answer to that question.
Well, that's just a thought, I mean, to me it sounds like it's something that should be up to people that own the home, not the whole town.
Over here. My comment to that is, it's just like the quality of the school system, the quality of your internet service, the value, the value to the property owners in the town. If you've got a good school system, you've got good internet service, you're going to raise property taxes. I see the two.
Any further discussion?
I would just follow up my question, I just, it feels like $25,000 is a lot of money to be using the term nebulous about.
I agree.
I feel like I'm out of terms, I, I. I understand that this is an issue, I agree it's a hardship for the folks in town that don't have it, especially with property values, but that's, it seems like a bit too big a number to me to not have nailed down what we're going to use it for. It's a lot, there's only so many taxpayers in town, it's a lot of money to.
I agree.
To shoulder.
Further discussion? Over here.
Yeah, I think people need to realize that if you live in a fairly remote area, like I live a mile in the Dick Road and it's only one house, yet my end of it, it's inhabited. So the chances of the cable. So the chances of the cable ever getting down there is pretty slim. So I have to be realistic about this. And I'm sure there's a lot of people here that don't have it, that live in a remote area that probably will never get it. So keep that in mind. I mean, a company is not going to lose money to get cable to your house a quarter to mile down the road unless there's five or six houses on the way there.
Brad?
It's moderator, Brad Williamson, Lyford Road. I'd like to propose an amendment to change this figure to $10,000.
Uh, that's fine, because the clerk will get your least favorable right there. Yeah. And I did hear a second. I'm not sure if you did second. Second is in the back. Did you get that? It's about a second. We now have an amendment on the floor to amend the amount of money to $10,000. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Over here.
Yes, question. You've talked about potential grant money. Were there matching funds? Were there minimums of matching funds? Have you?
This is what we heard from council, that, that, that kind of money might be up for studies and stuff. It was not particular, no grant was actually reviewed. So it was suggested that that might be out there. And, and that's why, again, I don't mean to make light of $25,000 as an heck of a lot of money and to where nebulous is exactly that. We do not know what this money could be used for. We're anticipating, we see the problem. We hear people that, I, I, I get cable, internet might be a luxury. Not anymore. It's becoming more of a necessity, maybe not as much as electricity and water, but it's, it's getting to that point. You almost need it to function, to work from home, do that kind of stuff. So we're, we're hearing the town, we're hearing a lot of the 25%, and we're trying to do what we can to act upon.
Over here.
It seems to me that the town is between a rock and a hard place on this one in the sense that you want to put some money in a package that's an emergency fund. If an opportunity presents itself, for instance, the cable company says, we are in a position to put three miles of cable in or something like that. It will cost the town X, but the town has to do it now. We're not waiting for town meeting. Is this what we're all about here or are we going to spend it on studies? Because I don't see $25,000 as being a big deal to the cable company. They don't want to do it for a lot of technological reasons that I could get into. They have to boost the signal. You just can't run nine miles of cable or 10 miles of cable and everybody's got cable because that's relatively cheap enterprise. It's, it's a little more expensive than that. So we're, we're at the mercy of a private company. And I believe the $25,000 is just going to go and sit in a place. Am I correct? It's not going to be used for anything unless it's directly related to the cable. There's no language in here specific to the use of this money. And I think that that might be, there should be some there as to what this money can actually be used for related to cable. Because $25,000 is a nice sum, but what are we going to do? We're going to buy lawyer time? Are we going to actually buy linear footage of cable? We're going to do it based on a cost percentage by the cable company? I know they're not giving us any help because they really don't care. They have bigger fish to fry, it's obvious. But what was the intent of this? And should we or should we not include that language as a specific item in this particular thing? That's my question.
Mr. Fraser's next. If you want to prepare an amendment to act on after you do this amendment, may I just?
I'm, I'm going to speak to this amendment lowering it to $10,000. And then also part of Gary's concerns, I think $25,000 is too much to have in a fund that we really don't know what it's going to be used for. 10 sounds more reasonable because this is a serious problem. But I have a question for the selectmen. If in fact the cable company came back to you with a firm proposal in six months, you can call a special meeting and we could appropriate the money at that time. Isn't that not correct?
Yep.
We could call a special town meeting. If there was a deal in play and it had a time limit, as Gary has suggested, might, it's just a hypothesis it might happen. Is, we could always call a special meeting on this if a deal pops up in the middle of the year and we can't wait until next year's town meeting. So I support Mr. Williamson's amendment to drop this to 10 grand.
Do you wish to answer the question?
We, we use the number that we've always given us some room to, to work on the problem this year. I mean, if we have an opportunity and we use the $10,000, we stop working on it. I mean, if that's what you want, that's what we do.
Over here.
Did I give something, say a little bit earlier that town funds cannot be expended on a public utility? Can we actually contribute to the extension cost or not?
Yes, we can, but there are many requirements that the town has to satisfy before we can take that step.
It's not like we can just go and contract out and say, do it.
The lawyer indicated we have to have multiple public hearings demonstrate a general need for the town to have this, this capability for the betterment of the town. So if the constitution would come and the 25% would come and say, we need it, we can't work from home, that starts building that case.
So is that along the process? That won't be an opportunity in the future to request a decision?
Possibly.
Gary, I see other people want to speak first. Anybody else? Rick, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I believe cable is not a public utility. Therein lies the problem. It's a private company. It used to be just TV, a luxury. Now it's a necessity of life, but it's still not a public utility.
Gary, do you want to say anything else? And then I see Tom Jones is sitting up.
No, Frank hit it right on the head. We can't have a special meeting if we come up with a height, they're going to do this for 50 grand. The whole town gets cable. We'd all vote for that because everybody, that was the biggest item on the survey we just did for.
Mr. Tom. A very quick comment. I support the amendment. I think this is an important problem that we should try, that I'm happy the selectmen are trying to solve it. And I think they should. And I think they should not hesitate at all to call a special meeting if they need more money to actually have a solution to this problem. So I would say, don't, if you run out of the $10,000, if that passes, don't just stop. If you've got a real solution, call the meeting, explain it to us. We'll, we'll, we'll appropriate the right, right amount of money and solve it, right? So just don't feel like if we only appropriated $10,000 here, that that's it, right? I think that, I feel like we should solve the problem. And I'm part of the 75%, but I really appreciate that I'm part of the 75% because I work from home, software engineer. Before we got cable on Stoneroe, I had a really hard time working here. I totally get it. And so I think we should solve the problem. And I ask you to, you know, don't, don't take a vote today as a limit on what we want to do as a town.
Well, Sean, as far as the amendment, is there any further discussion on the amendment? The amendment is to reduce the money to $10,000. Over here.
I just wanted to say thank you to the residents who do that, Gary. If you do react quickly and there is an emergency meeting, if everyone does vote for the amended amendment and there's a solution that the selectmen bring to us, if you all join in, I so appreciate it. And I'm sure the other people who don't have cable do, because it really is important to have it. It's not just a luxury. I don't play games on my computer. I sit there and play those little game. I, I don't even, I don't even know how to. You know, I use it for communication on, it's just sketchy. It's awful.
All right, good. Any further discussion on the amendment? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
On the ayes have it, the amendment is adopted. We are now going to see if we adopt the amended version of the warrant. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
The warrant article passes. Number 11. The city of the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 for professional restoration of town record books and to fund this appropriation by authorizing withdrawal of $3,000 from the Records Preservation Capital Reserve Fund. The fund balance being $11,818.21 with the balance of $7,000 to be raised by taxation. Rick, I understand you wish to make that as a motion?
I will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, this authorization of $10,000 for the record books for restoration is $3,000 out of the Records Preservation Capital Reserve Fund and $7,000 through taxation. That's for one book. The fund balance, $11,818 would be used for potentially in the future, $3,000 on the other books with taxation paying for the rest. And Craig, I believe you have an example of what we're discussing.
I wanted to give a little bit of history on what's happened thus far. We've had three town record books conserved professionally by the Northeast Document Conservation Center in Andover, Massachusetts. The first one was done, it's our earliest book. It starts with 1778 in Middleton and goes to 1813. And out of this fund, we paid $2,805 to have it professionally conserved. It was not microfilmed, unfortunately, and it was not digitally scanned, unfortunately. Four years later, we did the second town record book, which was 1813 to 1826. We paid $3,000, $3,890 for that professional conservation. Both of these, the entire book was deacidified, cleaned. Any pressure tape was removed. Repairs were done with, they use a Japanese tissue paper and Japanese adhesive. This is all standardized conservation practice. I think, I think that that town record book was microfilmed, but I'm not sure. I didn't have time to check our microfilm collection. In 2004, the Latter Day Saints from Utah came and microfilmed all our vital records. So we have all of those on microfilm. In 2007, I wrote two grants to the Vital Records Improvement Fund. And we, we received $5,300 to have all of our vital record books conserved professionally by another company, which does not do as good of a job, in my estimation. And we received close to $1,400 to have smoke and fire alarm put into the vault. So if there was ever a problem, a fire in the vault, we would have some warning. Then in 2008, the third town record book was done once again by NEDCC. I wrote a Moose Plate grant for that. We received $5,000 from Moose Plate towards an expense of roughly $7,000 for the conservation, digitalization, and microfilming of that town record book. And I didn't bring all three. But this is what we get back. First of all, they build a, they make a custom storage box so that the volume fits in it. So this book, you'll see, can't read it from where you are, but that tells exactly what happened to the book. The condition which it was received and then the condition after, or what was done to it. So this one was cleaned, deacidified, excuse me. Pages mended where needed. Pressure tape removed. If any of you have ever seen what happens with Scotch tape after about 30 or 40 years on a document, they clean that up. And then this one was rebounded. And the other two books look just like this. They're smaller volumes and they were rebounded. This is volume record book number eight. And it basically represents volume book number seven, which is sitting down in Andover, so I can't show it to you. I drove it down there about a month and a half ago so they could give us a clear proposal of the condition, what needed to be done and what it was going to cost. This one is almost completely separated. The one that they have, record book number seven, one side of it is still attached. So the long and short of it is, the good news is that the proposal came back. When I took it to them, the woman who I met with, the conservator, felt that the binding was probably capable of being repaired, which would cut down on expense. So what we agreed on was they would give me two proposals. One where they would replace the binding with a brand-new binding, like they did here. The other one where they would repair it and then they'd do all the rest of it, including the digitalization and the microfilming. So the final sum that comes in is to have the binding repaired, which is what I would suggest we would do. And that would be my recommendation to the selectmen. The total cost is $6,885. The conservation of the book is $4,145. And the digitalization, which is a 460 images, is $2,140. And that includes the digital images coming back on a hard drive, not a CD. And that hard drive, obviously, we can load onto our server. If we do a new binding, we're talking about a difference. I had it figured out someplace, but I don't have it figured. I think it's $1,435 if we go with a new binding. The conservation with the new binding is $5,560. Digitalization is the same price. Microfilming is the same price. We have not had a book done since 2008. That's 11 years. We also haven't contributed any money to this Records Preservation Fund in well over 11 years. I'd say closer to 15 years. In the beginning, when it was started, we were putting in $2,500 to $5,000 a year. Its specific purpose is only for conservation of the town record books and any other documents, any other record books that need conservation. That's all it's used for. It's not used for paying an archivist or buying supplies. Any questions?
Yes. This.
Can I take, or do you need a moment?
I generally run the meetings.
You go ahead.
I've been the assistant moderator for some time. And if you would like to run this portion of the meeting, I would be glad to sit down and let my legs rest and let you come up here.
I had a question to you for the.
Frank, why don't we give you the honor for a few minutes?
Yes.
My question, this town record book, is this something that I could check out? Who's in charge of it? Where is it kept?
Technically, the town clerk is the keeper of all the records. It's kept in the archives. Nobody has access to it except Virginia. She doesn't know where they are and me and Kristen, what will.
Is this something that I can check out and look through it?
You can come to the town hall and visit in the town hall and with supervision, you can look at it under certain, there's certain requirements, like you can't have a pen around it. You can't have, your hands have to be washed before you touch it. You don't have to wear gloves, which some places require. The whole idea of having it on microfilm and digital is.
The whole idea of having it on microfilm and digital is, it's much easier to look at it digitally.
Why would you need both digital and microfished?
Because we don't, it's not microfished, it's microfilm, we don't have a microfilm reader. They cost about six or seven thousand dollars.
Why do you both, why don't you just pay for digital?
Because microfilm is still considered the standard for reproduction. More and more people are talking about digitalization, but the state still doesn't have very clear policy on what's acceptable digital storage of records.
How many books are there?
There are eleven. The last two, which Virginia and her predecessor kept, are obviously in the best condition. This one would be the next one to go, this is book eight. We skipped book four, five, six, and there's another seven, there are two sevens, so technically the one that's in Andover is seven A, but it says in the front of it, seven. I wouldn't see doing this book for another couple of years. Oh, and the part I forgot to tell you is I'll be writing a grant for another Moose Plate grant, which is current right now. Whether or not we can get that funded, I don't know. Whether or not they fund the whole thing or only part of it, I don't know. Any other questions?
Yes. How many books do we have to complete the job? There's one down in Andover, you've got one here, and there are, how many more?
Let's see, so that's five are done, so there's six more, and none of those are in immediate need. You could make the argument that there's no need.
And is the cost based upon the condition?
Right, the condition and what has to be done to it, yeah. So in other words, if you have a lot of ripped pages, if you have a lot of fresh old Scotch tape, this one has a bunch of documents that were either, you can see there, they're either glued in with probably a hide glue, or they're stapled in. The stapling is the easiest part to undo, you remove all those what should be loose documents, house them in archival folders, so the volume returns to its proper size. This one, they may be able to repair the binding, just like they're doing with number seven, or they can do with number seven. Frank?
Are you going to make a recommendation, any point, to digitize all eleven volumes, so they're all digitized, for preservation and for access?
I don't know. I haven't really thought about it.
Was it only, wasn't, it was two thousand dollars for all of them to digitize?
To digitalize this, the number seven is two thousand one hundred and forty.
So approximately that per volume, right?
Well, no, where you have a microfilm, it's interesting, you can digitalize, like the Granite State newspaper over at Wolfborough Public Library, you can look at it digitally on the computer, those digital images were made from the microfilms of the Granite State newspaper. The standard for conservation is you digitalize, and then you make the microfilm from the digital images, because they're better images. Microfilm images, for those of you that have ever used microfilm, are not great images. Primo.
Craig, do you, is there any rationale why three thousand coming from the existing fund and taxation seven thousand? Can you rationalize those figures?
That was done by the selectmen. I expected them to withdraw the entire amount from the Records Preservation Fund, just like we do with the roads, and then to vote to put in maybe twenty-five hundred or three thousand, but they decided to add it to my budget, which surprised me.
Selectmen, do you address that?
If we're done with the questions, do you, Craig, I'll let you sit down, and I'll leave the discussion on the warrant. And if you would like to continue, go right ahead.
Could I direct that same question for the selectmen, why they elected three thousand, only throw three thousand, and taxation the other seven thousand? Go ahead.
We elected that so we would continue to have money in the fund for future volumes to be restored and preserved.
No want to fifty-fifty split?
We decided on thirty-seventy.
Okay.
So the body is the legislative body of the town, if you'd like to propose an amendment, Ginny has pieces of paper. Is there another comment?
I just have a question. If I remember what was correctly stated a moment ago, the cost is going to be about a total of seven thousand.
Yes.
So that's under the ten thousand to be appropriated, but it says for this volume, specifically, ten thousand for this volume, is that a problem? The wording, a problem?
No, because what would happen is three thousand would come out of the Capital Reserve Fund, and the balance, which might be less than seven thousand dollars, would then be raised by taxation. You would end up with a little bit of a surplus in the general fund, which would revert to the taxpayers.
When we did this planning, that was a planning number, it would be fine, we might be, to amend that number now that we have better information to the lower number. If someone-
Ginny has paper and pencils. Yep. Is there any further discussion? I guess nobody wants to make an amendment, then we'll have money in the fund to do another volume over sooner. Over here.
Can I ask her a question?
Yes, she may.
How far after this volume is completed, is there's money for that volume? The one that's, the ones at Northeast right now, is there funding for that volume?
That's what this warrant article is addressing, is the one that's down there.
Why is it to pay for that?
Yes.
For that, for that book?
I took it, it's down there sitting, if for some reason the warrant failed, then I'd go down to North Andover, pick it up, and I'd bring it back home. But I needed to take it down there, so they could assess it and give me a exact proposal for what it was going to cost. And that's what I just read to you, was the six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, or whatever it was.
Very good. Any further discussion? Do we care to make an amendment? If there is no further discussion, are you ready for the vote?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The warrant article carries. Number twelve, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of veterans memorial monuments, and authorize the withdrawal of two thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-six cents from the Veterans Memorial Capital Reserve Fund, which is incidentally the balance as of the end of last year, but the balance of three thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-four cents can be raised by taxation. I understand you wish to make that as a motion.
Yes, I do.
Is there a second? You wish to speak to your motion?
Yes. The Heritage Commission and the Cemetery Trustees have been working on the veterans memorial in the new cemetery. The Cemetery Trustees went out this past year to get quotes for monuments for the memorial. It came in, I believe, at five thousand with a thousand for installation, hence the six thousand dollar number. Last year, we put money into a trust fund to start accumulating cash for this purchase. Plan is to spend the six thousand for the memorial, get it done this year, take the money out of the trust fund, the rest from taxation.
Any further discussion on this warrant? Over here.
What is the design, and what will appear on this memorial? You don't have any mockups, so we can see what we're voting for. Is it ten feet tall, is it three feet tall?
We had some at our town record, town book. What they look like is they're, if I can describe, they're monuments about yay wide, and then they go up eighteen to two feet high with a slant, a slammed face, and engraved in that piece of granite is the emblem for the service. So-
What service?
Each service has their own, has their own emblem.
I will remind Mr. Peckham that we usually identify ourselves when we speak. Make it to him.
It's my age.
I totally understand. Are there any further discussion? Over here.
I'd like a little more description, why are we having three, and why are they so short, and where are they going to go? I mean, why don't we have one big one, and then are they going to have people's names on it, or what?
I think the plans are for five, one for each of the service.
Five? Coast Guard and Marines?
In a semicircle, up by the flagpole. Where was that, we've displayed, or the Cemetery Trustees have displayed the proposed layout at some of our town functions, and we've had mockups of the stones at our coffees, I believe. Craig, it was in the town report, either last year or two years ago. The memorial area with the flagpole, the thirty-foot semicircle of the raised area, and where the monuments would go.
I believe Anne Steffleton, our Cemetery Commissioner, is there, is she?
Yes. I'm only, I'm only standing.
Would you like to say anything?
No.
Birdie, you're next.
The mockups were there when we dedicated the flagpole in November on Veterans Day, they were all up there. Unfortunately, there's snow and you can't see it, but when you head there in the spring, you'll, I think they've done a nice job up there.
Right, if we wait till then, it's too late. Back when I was speaking.
Dick Peckham. Will the emblems or the insignia of the Coast Guard and the Merchant Marine also be on the memorial?
Does somebody wish to ask a question now?
They already said the Coast Guard.
The Merchant Marine will not be, we've talked about doing a additional memorial, using probably a different format to honor the Guards, the Air National Guard, the Army National Guard, the Merchant Marine, the Waves, the WACs, and whatever other groups we've missed. But initially, it will just be the Navy, the Air Force, the Army, the Coast Guard, what's that other word?
Marine.
Marine. Any further discussion?
I have a picture of the Marine.
Picture of the Marine, is that the monument?
Yeah, this is the Boston one.
Oh, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Is the town ready to the question? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, nay. The warrant article passes. Mr. Zekker, it's my understanding that you wish to be passed over warrant article number thirteen as we pass warrant number, article number twelve, am I correct?
No, we want to do number thirteen.
Okay.
And we have amended it.
Okay. You're, yes, I'm sorry. I will let you read your motion then, because I'm obviously in dispute.
To see if the town will vote to discontinue, to discontinue the Veterans Memorial Capital Reserve Fund created in two thousand and seventeen, said funds with accumulated interest to date of withdrawal are to be transferred to the town's operating budget. We have to make a modification there, per DRA, not our operating budget, so I want to amend that to go to our general fund.
Okay, the vibrator heard that you said that the funds are to be transferred to the town's general fund, so we only have to take one vote. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
And the idea here is we're taking the money out, let's clean up, let's clean up the books and close the fund.
So there would be zero in it?
Yes, it would be zero, and the fund will go away, will not be reported.
Good. Any further discussion? Oh, I see, I read the comment wrong, the comment was, it didn't, sorry, I spaced it. Is there any further discussion by the town? If you're ready for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The warrant article passes with its alternative language. Next one, number fourteen, see if the town will vote to raise the hourly pay rate for the supervisors of the checklist from thirteen dollars per hour to sixteen dollars per hour from this point forward. Rick, I understand you wish to make that as a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Rick, you may go ahead.
What this does is this raises the pay for the supervisor of the checklist up to everybody else being all part-time, closer work at the town.
Good. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The warrant article passes. Number fifteen, see if the town will vote to name the trust fund created March eighth, twenty sixteen, by warrant article number twenty-one, to Private Donations-Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund. This naming is for clarification purposes only, the purpose of the fund remains the same. Rick, I understand you're making that as a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rick, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, what this does is it renames the trust fund used by the Cemetery Trust Funds for private donations, for clarification purposes only.
Very good. Is there discussion on the warrant? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The warrant article passes. Number sixteen, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the selectmen's recommended sum of nine hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars to the town operating budget. Said sum does not include special or individual articles addressed in this warrant. Brian, I understand you wish to make that as a motion?
And amend it, yes.
We're going to get to that.
Okay.
You're making the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. I have in hand the first amendment, which I understand you wish to make, Brian?
Yes.
And the first amendment is to amend account number four-one-six-zero, reevaluation of property to reduce from twenty-two thousand dollars to zero. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a second to this amendment?
Second.
Good. You wish to speak to your amendment?
An explanation for it. As I said before, DRA approved our budget, approved our report, and then back at the last minute, there were corrections, and we had a phone conference with DRA, and they explained to us that we do not need to have this sum within the operating budget. This sum of twenty-two thousand dollars would come from a reserve fund that we currently have established for this exact purpose. The Board of Selectmen are agents to expend these funds, so we do not need to account for this within the operating budget, so we would look to zero this, this item out. And we would then account for the money in our year-end report, which is the MS five-thirty-five. And so the money would be accounted for, it would be tracked, DRA would know to see where the money's coming from, but we do not need to have this in the operating budget. So it is a correction that DRA is looking to implement, and in the end, it helps reduce the overall operating budget by the sum of twenty-two thousand dollars.
Very good. Is there further discussion to the amendment? Saying none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Carrie, I understand you wish to make a second amendment to account four-one-nine-four, general government buildings, to reduce that amount from eighty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
You wish to speak to your motion?
Yes. We're looking to expend sixty thousand dollars this year on this building, and we originally- And we originally thought, since it is in a capital reserve fund, which we are agents to expend, we thought we needed to have it in the operating budget. DRA once again has corrected us, saying that we do not need to have this in the operating budget. We as agents will take the money from those trust accounts, pay for whatever expenditures we are anticipating, which is around $60,000. And then those monies would be counted and tracked within the MS 535.
Good. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The amendment passes. One further amendment?
Yes.
On the revenue side, account 3916, transfer from expendable trust funds. You wish to reduce that sum from $86,000 to $4,000. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. You wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, I do. As I just noted, we're looking to knock down the $22,000 into $60,000. The 20 from the property revaluation and 60 from the townhouse repairs. So that is essentially the $82,000 that we had originally accounted as revenue because we were going to pull that money from trust, and we needed to count that as revenue. Since this money will not be going back into the operating budget, there's no reason to have, account for that revenue within the town operating budget. So we would just bring down $4,000 for the town building office equipment.
Very good. Is there any further discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Very good. I have been asked to amend, these reductions have changed the total town operating budget to $872,837. Is there any further discussion on the operating budget?
Could you just repeat that number one, I say?
872-847. Is there any further discussion on the operating budget? In fact, they're really easy to... Are you ready for the question of the operating budget? See a lot of people not even at yet? I guess they're ready for the question of the operating budget. All those in favor of the operating budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The operating budget passes. Is there any other additional business to come before this meeting? Seeing none, declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.